Good evening. I want to start the school committee meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Bergeron.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'd like to start tonight by discussing the current active positive cases and quarantines within the district. At the time I wrote this report last Thursday, we had 28 active cases within the schools. I happy report that we are down to 15, and I'm going to give you the updated numbers. For MHS, we have zero cases. For Wickham, we have three cases. For Jarick and Richard, we have four cases. For Goodnow, we have four cases. And at Kane and the preschool, we have zero cases. Additionally, at the time that I wrote the report, we had four classrooms out on quarantine. We currently now have three classrooms on quarantine. The classroom at Goodnow is back in person. So there's been a significant decrease in both quarantines and in students that were positive. Additionally, I did pull down the Board of Health's confirmed cases in the city as of yesterday, and there was 154, which was less than half of what it was the last time we had met. So again, the case numbers have significantly dropped over that same period of time. Looking at the data for the state, all four key metrics, cases, testing, hospitalizations, and deaths, all four are down significantly. And I'm starting to see the news outlets are now reporting this as a significant trend and not any type of bubble. So obviously, this is good news as we're heading into a vacation. And when we come back from vacation, we're going to start our staggered return of students, and we look forward to that. My second item is the Project 351 nominees and selected student. I have the pleasure tonight of recognizing Victoria Villar as our Project 351 ambassador. Please find the attached document with all of the finalists, and we're proud to have Victoria be our ambassador for Marlboro. Thank you to the Wickham staff and administration for continuing this important program, and special thanks to Ms. Heather Roach and Mr. Wayne Labby for their continued efforts to promote this experience. My third item, All Eastern Honors Choir. I'd like to honor and recognize Samantha Gamber for her selection as the All Eastern Honors Choir. Please see the attached release from Mr. Rosenthal submitted for Samantha. And a special thank you to Ms. Shannon McNulty and all of our music teachers for their continued efforts on behalf of our students. I'd also like to take a moment, because I just received this as well, and I'd also like to recognize Eli Plummer. With great pleasure, I share that Mr. Eli Plummer is selected to participate in the 2021 All-State Chorus. Eli will perform with 500 of the most talented student musicians from across the state. Eli earned this recognition by going through two very rigorous auditions, one at the district level where over 4,000 students are represented, and then if recommended, they move to the all-state edition where over 1,000 students compete for the honor of being in this elite ensemble. All rehearsals will take place virtually, and a final video of the performance will be released in April. Congratulations to Eli and the entire music department. And one last recognition, I'd like to thank Jill Morin for training and directing the effort, Mike Lawton and Matt Pacaccio, our Lindsey Crane, who you guys know does our meetings, she's back behind the wall right now, and MHS students Cody Garrick, Jeff Cody, and Thomas Chrisifouli. Our live streaming of the events has been an incredible success, and the partnership with WMCT TV has been wonderful. Thank you to Jill and to Mike Lawton for leading on this and providing an opportunity for the community and parents to watch our athletic contests. Based on the number of website hits, people are watching. And I had the pleasure of attending three senior nights last week, and they all went wonderfully. So thank you so much to everyone who has been involved with this, and I'm very thankful to everyone who's made this happen so the parents can also watch their student athletes perform on the athletic fields, courts, and ice. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, could you, just for the public's sake, explain what the Project 361 is?
Project 351.
351, right.
Project 351 is a leadership assembly that generally recognizes eighth-grade students. That's what it's been in the history that we've been doing it. And one eighth-grade student from each district gets to be part of a leadership academy that they go and work in conjunction with the governor's office and other state agencies. And they work on important issues of policy. They represent us, our district, and our city. And this has been a longstanding program that we've been part of, and I'm very happy to say we've been part of for at least the seven years I've been here.
Great, thank you. Ms. Hennessy?
I just was going to say, I'm so pleased that even during this time with the pandemic that we continued to pursue having the 351 ambassador, because it really was wonderful when it was initiated, and I'm just, I'm really happy that we're continuing to pursue recognition of the importance. Also, I wanted to say, especially right now with the issues of limitation around music opportunities, I'm really proud that Samantha and Eli both have this opportunity to be recognized for, you know, what really is a challenge right now, but yet continuing to pursue it and to have the full support of obviously the music staff, which I think really just speaks to how strong our department is here within our district of wanting to help and continue to push this forward. And I have to say, I'm so thrilled about the live streaming as a parent of athletes. And I know we had had this discussion way before this actually came to fruition, but when we were envisioning the potential issues that were going to arise around spectators and the athletic events, I'm thrilled that so many people have come together to find a way of allowing parents to obviously still be involved, the athletes being able to still appropriately compete safely, and, you know, and getting other people to be actively involved. And I'm so grateful that all of these parties could come together, and especially having the students involved with something that they're passionate about. And thank you so much to everyone for making it happen.
Anyone else? Mr. Caruso?
I definitely applaud also the accomplishments of all the students that were mentioned tonight, but I have to, a little bit of personal privilege here, because I had the pleasure for a number of years of singing beside Samantha in the IC choir, and she's a great kid, and this couldn't have happened to an IC kid. And so just wanted to make sure that Samantha knew that I remember those times when we used to be able to sing sometimes together.
Great. Anyone else? Seeing none. Ms. Murphy?
Thank you. I want to update the committee on the modifications to the Marlboro Public Schools' hybrid model plan. In November and December, the Department of Education surveyed all districts regarding the amount of live synchronous instruction provided to students. That audit documented that the Marlboro Public Schools' instructional model exceeded the new proposed in-person and remote student learning time regulations. In reviewing the new regulations and teacher feedback, we planned an increase of synchronous instruction when we transitioned back to a hybrid model. Teachers have built strong classroom communities and would like to continue instruction with their whole classrooms as much as possible when we return to the hybrid model on February 22nd. Based on this feedback, the following changes will be made. In grades three and four, in-person and at-home hybrid students will follow the in-person hybrid schedule. The in-person schedule will be modified so that all classrooms in grade three and four will begin with a morning meeting, have literacy and math class scheduled in the morning. At-home hybrid students will connect to the synchronous live classes every morning. Asynchronous work will be scheduled after lunch. In grades five through eight, in-person and at-home hybrid students will follow the in-person hybrid schedule. At-home hybrid students will connect to all synchronous live classes throughout the day. The live instruction will continue throughout the day. At the high school, in Marlboro High School, we'll transition to a six-period school day. During the first five periods, students at home will connect remotely to in-person classes. Students intending in-person class will have asynchronous elective classrooms, classes during period six when they return home. So they'll have to take a bus and then take their sixth period, so they're not going to be able to take that class live. It will be asynchronous. But students at home will participate in synchronous live classes for all six periods a day. The Department of Education has advised us that all grades across the model should average 35 hours of instruction. Our new plan will exceed those requirements, and in fact, we will be averaging over 45 hours in the two weeks. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Supervisor Visual Arts Julie Baker, who will provide an update on the annual Citywide Art Show.
Hey, everyone. Thank you for letting me present tonight. Okay, so for those of you that may not already know, the Citywide Art Show is an amazing tradition in Marlboro that was started by so many dedicated art teachers before I even started my career. It's a large-scale art show that celebrates the artistic accomplishments of our students across all schools and grades. And based on information that was shared with me from my mentors, we believe it began around 1980, which means we're right about at that 40-year mark. So last year, we had grand plans to celebrate like the 40th anniversary of the Citywide Art Show, but sadly, we all know, we could not follow through with those plans because of the COVID shutdown. But in most recent years, we were hosting the art show at the middle school, and we estimated that we were hanging about 800 artworks on the walls. And so the art show will definitely look different this year, and I will share with you what our vision is. But I thought it would be helpful to first just give you a brief overview of what art instruction actually looks like this year. So next slide, please. So this year, we all know, is like no other. We've had to adapt. That's probably the main thing we have learned this year, is we just have had to adapt to many things that were unforeseen. So because students can't share art materials this year, we provided art kits, individual student supply kits for all of our students. And with that in mind, our teachers also had to redesign their lessons to use the limited supplies that we were able to provide for everybody to make sure that it was an equitable experience for everyone. Art instruction, for the most part, is done virtually this year through Zoom and/or pre-recorded videos. And I have just been so impressed by the flexibility and adaptability of both our teachers and our students. They continue to rise to the challenges that we all face, and the students continue to submit their work. So instruction is virtual, while the students are submitting their work virtually as well. We no longer have piles of student artwork to go through. Of all of the differences, though, there are some things that have remained constant, both in our program and our philosophy of what we do. Not only does art unlock our minds and awaken our spirit, but it also is a great way to help children develop fine motor skills, practice creative problem solving, express themselves, and learn to persevere when something is challenging. So we continue to provide quality art instruction for all of these reasons. These are skills that enhance all forms of learning. Because of all the reasons, we still want to celebrate and recognize the amazing accomplishments of our students as well. So presenting work to an audience is one of our core artistic practices and our learning standards. When most people think about art class, they think of the creating piece, which is a big part of what we do. But students are also learning to connect their art-making to their own lives, they're learning to respond to other people's art, and they're also learning to present to an audience. Next slide, please. So here we go to a very different kind of art show this year. So instead of hosting within one of our buildings, we are planning a safe outdoor art exhibit on school grounds. I've been working with some local businesses to get some custom-printed lawn signs. You can see a mock-up over there on the slide. We are thinking that each lawn sign will be double-sided, so we could have two to four artworks on each of these lawn signs. And the main difference is that our art show will likely be later than normal. Usually, we like to have it at the end of March, which is National Youth Art Month, but I would like a little more guarantee that the weather will cooperate with us, so it'll likely be later in the spring. And once we work out all those details, we will definitely let everybody know and start to get the work. Happy to take any questions if there are any.
Questions from the committee. Mrs. Hennessy?
I'm not going to ask any question, I'm just going to compliment you. I'm absolutely thrilled, Julie. Like, I can't, I can't even say it enough. I wish you could see the smile that's actually underneath of my mask. I'm just absolutely thrilled by this opportunity, because if nothing else, it really is a great way to just promote art for our community as a whole. So thank you so much for thinking out of the box, for the discussion I'm sure you've been having with a lot of different staff members. And thank you, this is great.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Just going back to Ms. Murphy's report, I just wanted-
Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. We weren't done, we weren't done with the art yet.
Okay, well, I want to thank Julie for everything she's doing.
We will go back to Ms. Murphy in a second.
And then reserve a comment going back to Ms. Murphy's.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt. I would like to say something to Ms. - um, thank you for finding a way to make this happen, because it's truly one of my favorite times of the year, the Citywide Art Show. As the parent of a prior MHS art student, I know how wonderful it is for the kids of all ages to be able to show off their creations and to be able to do it in what may wind up being an even more public way. So my question regarding the signs is, will, are we going to be having the signs, is the actual art show on the signs, or are the signs to promote the art show?
So the art will be printed on the signs. We don't actually have physical artworks from our students this year. We have digital files that they're submitting to their art teachers. So, you know, the quality is tough sometimes if the students are using their Chromebooks to take pictures, but I think we're going to pull this off just fine, and we'll be able to print onto those lawn signs.
Fantastic. And so will there, and I don't know what happened last year, but you know, the 12 or so works that are chosen every year as part of the district art, what do we call it?
The permanent art collection?
That would be it. Were we able to do it last year, and will be able to do it this year?
We have added to our collection. We didn't miss a year yet. We just probably didn't formalize the recognition of that yet, so.
Okay, so maybe if we figure out how to do it this year, we can recognize last year's students as well.
Absolutely.
Fantastic. Any other comments for Ms. Baker?
Yay.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
Thanks so much.
Okay, back to Ms. Murphy, and I apologize again. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize that a lot of the modifications that Ms. Murphy was talking about are due to the good work of our teachers.
Yeah, can I also add to that, because I think the driving force for everything that we've done this year has been the teachers' vision of what's best for the students. So this, we need to be abundantly clear on this, that these changes have nothing to do with any state regulations. It is teacher-driven in the Marlboro Public Schools.
Yeah, and I'll just add to that, that, you know, we made a very conscious decision to not put teachers in a position where they had to teach synchronously and asynchronously at the same time. And at the time, the teachers were giving us that feedback, that that would be difficult, and we agreed. And to see that we've come this far, where teachers have got their groove, and they think they can handle it, and they've come to us and said that, I think is fantastic, because, you know, this is not the way it's happened in other districts. In many other districts, teachers were put in that position from the start and have struggled. And the fact that it has come from the teachers, that they have come to the realization that they can do this, is really great, and I think that students will definitely benefit. And when I read the state, you know, mandate, I thought that we already did meet the, you know, the standard that they were looking for. So for us to be making these changes, to go even higher above the standard, is, you know, is a great testament to the teachers and to your leadership, and thank you, I appreciate it. Ms. Hennessy?
And yeah, I have to echo that, especially in having conversations with other districts in our, you know, nearby vicinity, that definitely are nowhere near this camp in synchronous classes and opportunities. So while I know we've had a lot of conversations going back and forth versus the remote learning situation, and then obviously looking at our ramping up into hybrid, I think it's been a huge collaborative opportunity that everyone has really worked well together through a lot of challenges to find success. And, you know, I frankly think that our district has really shown a lot of capabilities of how to work together to successfully get through this challenging time. And thank you so much, Eileen, please express to all of the staff, and Mary, you know, please to all of the staff that I'm sure have voiced their opinion, and I appreciate that they're going to move forward on this, because I think that interaction not only helps from the pure educational aspect, but the social-emotional learning that can happen with the interaction that's available not only with the teacher, but as well with the students, really is key. So thank you to all.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Mr. Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. This is tonight's update from Finance and Operations. Food Services, just a reminder that when students return to the hybrid model on February 22nd, we will be implementing changes to the Remote Meals Program. We have created eight routes servicing 80 stops throughout the city. The routes will replace the existing model, and were chosen based on the most subscribed drop-off locations over the past few months. So we analyzed the data, we picked the stops that we think will make the most impact, and those are the stops that we'll be servicing starting on the 22nd. If these changes represent a significant hardship for any family, I encourage them to reach out to me directly, and we can get creative, at DDS@MPS.edu.org. Just a reminder that meals continue to be included in the Marlboro educational program, and we really encourage everyone to participate in support of the program. Facilities. The Facilities Department continue working with the HVAC consultant on assessing the school buildings. The consultant will be visiting schools this week as well as next week to ensure that the changes that we incorporated in the fall have not been impacted by the recent weather events. General Foreman Dan Jackson and Custodial Supervisor Andy White have had great success in identifying and quickly correcting any HVAC service issues. Fiscal Update. Governor Baker filed a $45.6 billion state budget on Wednesday, January 27th. While the governor's budget includes nearly $250 million in new funding for education, the City of Marlboro's portion of that increase was only marginal, $156,000, in new Chapter 78. FY22 Foundation Budget also allows municipalities to offset certain funding requirements with one-time federal funds, creating a potential deficit for many districts in FY23. Superintendent Bergeron and his administration are seeking to develop an FY22 budget that represents a 0% increase over the district's FY21 budget. The goal is to develop a 0% budget that protects jobs as well as critical portions of the improvement plan. We believe that planning for a challenging year now is the best path towards reliable and sustainable budgets in FY23 and beyond. Thank you.
Did you want to add anything, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think what Doug and I have already started looking at in terms of this year's budget is that while there is some uncertainty, it's just the governor's budget that's out. We know that there's many steps, and there's many other things that need to happen before that. But I think the recognition and realization that the revenue, you know, while there might be some new revenue pushed into the formulas, it doesn't always necessarily come back to the district. So when we're looking at something representing a 0% increase, the first goal for us is going to be to make sure that we're not laying off staff, period. Like, that's, because we're in the middle of a crisis, we're not interested in doing something that's going to lay off staff and create deficits in programs moving forward. But it is going to be a difficult year. There's really no two ways about it. That it's not just the state revenues, but local revenues as well have taken quite a hit, and we want to be responsible in the superintendent's budget that we submit to the school committee. So we are one month away from submitting the superintendent's budget, but I appreciate Mr. Diaz putting this out here, because what we did receive in information in the governor's budget, the $156,000, I mean, we buy more than $156,000 in paper. So this isn't an increase that's going to lead us in terms of being able to implement new programs and priorities. What we have to do really is look at our budget, look at the FTEs, and try to do as best a job as we can to reflect our priorities moving forward and learn from what we've had happen this year. So that's what I think you can expect from us in the superintendent's budget coming forward. But I did want to publicly say, like, we're not in any way, shape, or form looking to do any type of large reduction. That's not part of the plan. Thank you.
Ms. Matthews?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Diaz, and thank you, Superintendent Bergeron. On the fiscal, on the budgetary issue, you touched a little bit on it, like regarding the funding and the revenues. My understanding, though, was that there was also a conversation about the revenues actually exceeded what they initially had projected. Has there been any further conversation at the state level about making adjustments to the budget due to that change?
So what I had read, Ms. Matthews, was that the revenues exceeding the estimates were 2019 estimates. So in essence, that we're, we are barely going to be surpassing the amount of revenue that the state collected in 2019. In 2020, there was a significant drop. So in essence, it would be like us having the same budget we had in FY19. And that's why I think what I saw, and what still needs to go through the process, is that there was a significant amount of one-time funding used by the governor. I think if my memory serves me right, I don't have it in front of me, it was about $1.6 billion. Add to that the $1.35 billion they used last year, which may, a little of that might come back with some additional capital gains taxes and other pieces there. The state only had so much money in the war chest. So if they've already used close to $3 billion, there's not a lot left. So what we're trying to do is plan forward, not FY22, but we got to plan for '23 and ' '24 and '25, because this is going to be a significant multi-year problem, and we want to be very realistic about what it's going to look like the next couple of years.
And I want to thank both of you, obviously, for putting it out there that, you know, the goal is just- the, the goal is to protect our assets currently, and that, you know, to hold harmless and as much as we can, so to speak. Mr. Diaz, on the food services, the eighty, the eight routes servicing eighty different stops, will that be published anywhere before the 22nd so that those, so that the community, because obviously it's everybody who can take part in this, and where can they find it if it is already published?
Thank you for that question. We're communicating tomorrow about some, a program that we're running next week during vacation, so I didn't want to inundate families with communications from my office. But on Friday, we will be sending out on the meals a communication about the new stops attached to the meals, as well as an email with the location of the new stops. And they'll also be posted on our website as well. So there will be communication being released to the families later this week about the stops.
Thank you.
And again, just, of course, and just a reminder, when they do receive those communications, that it will be coming from me via email, they can feel free to reply to me and communicate any concerns directly with me as well.
Any other members?
Thank you.
Any other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none? Moving on, thank you. Minutes of the January 12th, 2021 School Committee Meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Care?
I think you have to roll call it, Michelle, since I'm on the remote.
You are absolutely right. We will roll call it. Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. Minutes of the January 26th School Committee Meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Mr. Caruso?
Yes, underneath the section on the, the academy, I think it's 3C, I think it is, what actually happened when it came to, I lost my spot here. Oh, when I said, when it came to me discussing the, my concern with the, I actually was replying to the fact that I saw the open house article, not, not employee posting. So it was actually because I saw the posting for the open, not the posting, but an article on their open house. That's what I saw that, that brought it to my attention, not, not, not a job posting. So it was based on seeing the ad, the publicity?
Yeah, I remember you said you saw it like in the newspaper or something, right?
Yeah, but I saw the actual posting that was mentioned.
Yeah.
For the, for the open house, that's what, that's what brought it to my attention, not an employee posting.
Okay, you got that change, Mrs. Matthews?
Yes, got it, we'll make the adjustment. So motion as amended, to approve as amended.
Motion made and seconded as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all, oh, roll call vote. Ms. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes, it is approved. Thank you. Public participation, Mr. Diaz, if you could work your magic, please.
Would you mind if I just read off?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Superintendent.
No problem. For the public participation portion of this meeting, members of the public may provide comment by emailing the superintendent, @superintendent@mps.edu.org before 4:00 PM on the above date, or dialing 774-243-0611, conference ID 542-687-540, pound sign. Again, public participation is not a question and answer session, but an opportunity for you to present your participation to the school committee. That phone number again is 774-243-0611, conference ID 542-687-540. Mr. Diaz, is there anybody in the queue?
There are no calls at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. And Madam Vice Chair, I did not receive any communications to read into the record.
Thank you. So this is public participation. Anyone from the public wishing to participate? Now is your time. Okay, we will move on. Action items. Mrs. Hennessy, policies for approval.
Thank you very much. So my first, an apology to you all that I was not able to get out the changed versions early enough, my error on not getting those out to Ms. Sibilio to make it into the packet. Hopefully, though, you all were in receipt of the changes, as you will see, if you did receive them, there were just a few little minor amendments that were made. So I will begin with the first policy. So it's a motion to approve, policy number 6.429.2, principals' salary ranges.
Motion made and seconded to approve, policy 6.429.2. Any discussion? Seeing none. We will take a roll call. Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
It's approved.
So, um, motion to approve, policy number 6.430, curriculum development and summer teaching slash extended day compensation.
Motion made and seconded to approve, policy 6.430. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
And vice chair votes yes.
Thank you very much. Next up would be, uh, sorry, just one second. Policy number, I'd like to make a motion to accept, policy number 6.700, employee benefit.
Motion made and seconded to approve, policy 6.700. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
And vice chair votes yes. It is approved.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept, policy number 6.750, faculty representative on committee.
Motion made to approve and seconded for policy 6.750. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mrs. Matthews? Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
And vice chair votes yes.
Thank you very much. And the last, I'd like to make a motion to approve, policy number 6.860, staff and others identification ID.
Motion made and seconded to approve, policy 6.860. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
And vice chair votes yes.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, and thank you to the Policy Committee for your continued diligence. Reports of the subcommittees. Ms. Hennessy?
So the Policy Committee did have a meeting last Thursday, where we did approve a number of additional policies. And we did table a, a few more where we will be planning another meeting coming up within the next number of weeks to continue finishing up a full review of the whole group of policies. But we are moving forward and making good avenues, so you'll see some more coming through soon. Thank you.
Excellent. Mrs. Matthews?
Thank you. I'm hoping that at our next meeting, Superintendent will be able to add it to the agenda, but I want to thank our cafeteria unit. We met with them, and in one session, we're able to come to a, an agreement on a subsequent contract, and pending ratification by them as well as us. But I want to thank them, because it was a very quick and painless process in these crazy times. We managed to pull it off altogether, so thank you.
Mrs. Matthews, do you want to mention the warrant?
That's in Members Forum.
Any other subcommittees wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Members Forum.
I have reviewed the warrant and will sign it tomorrow.
Thank you, Mrs. Matthews. Any other members? Mrs. Hennessy?
Um, thank you very much. So I did want to update the committee relative to Fall 2 Sports. MIAA Sports Medicine Committee met, goodness, we met a lot. So we met actually over the last meeting, so the 25th, 26th, and 27th of January, we did meet, moved forward a number of modifications relative to Fall 2, any sports that were participating or could participate in Fall 2 sports. And that did move forward through the COVID Task Force and the Board of Directors for approvals. We did have another meeting actually yesterday, which we did not think was necessarily going to be quite as exciting as it ended up being. That was because the EEA decided to make modifications on their guidelines that they had not touched since August.
Can you tell us, what's the EEA's?
Uh, yeah, you would. Envir-
Energy and Environmental Affairs.
Thank you. I was like, uh, uh, uh. So EEA had provided guidelines around all kinds of different specifics, such as who could participate indoor activities, outdoor activities, spectator numbers, what was considered by them to be low-risk, medium-risk, and high-risk activities, guidelines around all different kinds of facilities, which obviously we fall underneath some of those facilities. So this afternoon, I did send those out to the committee, so you all would have it. It is a lot to read and a lot to take in. But considering that Fall 2 is supposed to be able to begin within districts as of February 22nd, I did think that you all would want to see the EEA guidelines, which actually lifts a number of the restrictions that have been guidelines previously. I have expressed some concerns that I have around some of the lifting of those restrictions to the superintendent. When I was made aware of this yesterday afternoon, I did correspond with the superintendent to make sure that he was aware, because this was not something that had been communicated or at all that it would be happening. So I would expect that you all might have some questions, and that it may be something that we may want to have some more conversation around the table at our next meeting. But I would encourage you to, to read this, and if you all would like copies of what had been in place for August, I can certainly get that to you so that you can have a comparison. I think it's helpful to kind of understand where we had been and why some of the modifications had been put in place, to understand where they've now moved forward. As well, it may end up that some of the modifications that we had approved for Fall 2 may be changed potentially by MIAA. I do not believe that it will possibly be at the sports med level, but it may happen. So I'm just, we're in a bit of limbo since this literally just happened yesterday with no warning. So that's my update around sports stuff.
All right, may I ask a couple of questions for clarification?
Please do.
First, remind us which sports are included in Fall 2? Football, field hockey?
Um, here, just, I want to make sure I'm not misspeaking as I, as I say this to you. So for, for Fall 2, we would have available, and it's not necessarily just within our district, because such as field hockey, which you mentioned. Field hockey for us happened during Fall 1. So even though we've already had that within our district, there are a number of school districts throughout the state that will be participating potentially in field hockey during Fall 2.
Got it.
There are limitations, because as the limitations we had about traveling, some folks will not necessarily have schools that can participate with other schools. So there is soccer that will potentially be happening again in some other districts. We already had that within our district, so we will not be having that in Fall 2. Volleyball was something that we moved from Fall 1 to Fall 2, so that would be potentially a sport happening here in our district. Indoor track is another potential activity. And I will say, just, just very cursory, that many schools that are looking to participate actually in indoor track, more or less, really it becomes outdoor track. So only because of some obstacles, I guess I should say, on trying to have it indoors. So there is unified basketball is for Fall 2, and cheer, which is not normally managed under the MIAA, but in tandem was asked to have that as a participation for modifications through MIAA. And then football has been moved to Fall 2. And so the timing for Fall 2 is supposed to be starting potentially on February 22nd. Okay?
So yeah, and then I recall when we were dealing with winter, and probably from Fall 2 as well, that there was conversation in mid-watch regarding who is going to play whom and under what circumstances, whatever. Does that part of the process need to happen as well?
Yes, Mr. Wazinski is working on that. Like, for example, we, we generally call it our pod.
Yeah.
So we've been using that term for most of the year. I think the only, the only change that I remember off the top of my head right now is I believe Pittsburgh is coming into our pod, which is, is fine. They're relatively close, and we can include them. So we don't see any major changes there in the pods, other than some folks need to figure out how to work within these restrictions. It's going to be very difficult to play football if you don't have turf fields, like-
Oh, I, unfortunately, I hadn't gotten to read this yet, so-
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot of restrictions around the, the, the actual participation in the sports, and I think a lot of communities are just going to try to figure out how to best-
And I think a lot of communities are just going to try to figure out how to best move forward with these. It's going to, it's going to be difficult in some cases. But then again, changing the rules at the last minute sometimes makes it even more difficult, because you had a plan, and now you have to alter the plan.
The other thing to just continually keep in mind is that local board of healths are really going to take the lead here for each individual community. So the local board of healths can supersede any of the guidance and recommendations, whether it be from EEA or MIAA. So that's just something to kind of keep in mind as all of this continues to move forward.
So we are in public members' forum. Any other members wishing to be heard? Mr. Superintendent, can you just give us a quick update on how we're progressing with the testing plans so that things will be in place for the 22nd when we return?
Sure. And I might ask Mr. Diaz and Ms. O'Brien to assist me with this. So the good news is we have a contract with a third party. We're using Project Beacon, and that is the same provider of our binax testing. So we have a purchase order that has gone to the company. We received test kits. We are ready to go. Our plan, plan, is this week, we would like to start with testing employees to get used to the system. So there's some stuff that we have to do to install programs on computers, get our printers ready, have all of that ready to go so we can actually get the tests back to the lab. It's a, it's a great process. I I think we chose the right vendor. What what Mr. Diaz did is he ordered a lockbox for every school that we were going to put the tests in. And and when we call, there's a courier who's going to come pick up the tests and deliver them back to the lab. And we generally get our results within 24 to 36 hours, which is excellent. So I'm very, very happy with that. Mr. Diaz, please fill in the blanks if I missed any, any big ones.
We covered it. We have 4,000 test kits already in district and another order in for 4,000 more.
And the the goal, there's a couple of goals, and after vacation, to to begin testing students, but also thanks to partnerships with Mayor Vigent and his staff, they've reached out to the hospital. And I I do have an email that's going to go out to parents to encourage them to please go down to the New England Sports Center on the vacation week and get testing, especially if your kids are coming back in person. The lines there are a lot significantly less than they were in the past. Nobody's waiting for three hours anymore. They're still doing quite a few tests, maybe, I think, last what I heard is about 500, but that's nowhere near what they were doing pre and post Thanksgiving. So we're going to encourage people to take advantage of that resource as well. We still have it. And then start our own testing within the schools for students after we come back from break. And then have it be a regular system where we can test employees and students weekly.
So one thing to add to that, I know that as well as the New England Sports Center, the urgent care that was operating down at the Best Western is up and running again. The state reopened it as a Stop the Spread site. So that is another option for people.
Sorry, I did not mention that. And I believe through that one, you can also book an appointment.
You can.
So that's, that's another great option, and it's through the Stop the Spread campaign. The the specific information with the Sports Center was in conjunction with Marlboro Hospital, and I appreciate them giving me this information I can share with parents as well. That's, it's a great resource for us to be able to use during the vacation week.
Absolutely. There was one other question I was going to ask on that. Oh, and how are we with getting the responses back from the permission slips?
That I would have to ask Ms. O'Brien if she doesn't mind jumping in and giving us an update on that.
Sure. We have gotten a really good response so far with, with the, the push out with the emails. We have the capacity to be able to resend emails if, if a parent has reached out to the school, to the school to say that they either accidentally deleted it, or if it went to junk mail. We're, you know, putting those out again for those who haven't signed up yet, but probably have about half. And the nurses also have the capability of, if a student comes to their office, to be able to call the parent and be able to walk them through and have it signed right then and there as well.
Excellent. Great, thank you. Ms. Hennessy?
I just was going to echo that I personally have had to utilize the Sports Center for testing on a number of cases. I guess I shouldn't say have to. I've chosen to. How about that? And honestly, it has been a really easy experience to go through. So I would really highly encourage people to utilize this incredible service that we have right here available. It's really easy to do and helps to have that information and data so we can limit the spread. So thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to be heard in members' forum? Seeing none? Mrs. Ryan, would you like to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? Seeing none? We are adjourned at 8:30.